I want to call to order the Wednesday, March 17th, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is that I am the United States of America, and I do present my report for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and all things are.
Please, Commissioner Miller is on his seat. All other commissioners are present. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on February 17th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero. Public comments. If anybody wants to speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, this is the time to speak. Seeing none, I will close that part of the public comments. Disclosure of ex parte communications.
None.
None.
The Chairman has been at multiple meetings with Pebble Creek HOA, a neighborhood group, and staff concerning the Pebble Creek case, and he has also been in communication with David Prescott on the Australia Mountain Ranch case. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on case 092000009, Pebble Creek Phase One Plan to Area Development PAD Amendment. We will also hear the case, the presentation on case 095000006, which is Pebble Creek Phase One, Unit 1A Preliminary Platte, and those will be separate votes that the Commissioner will take. Oh, is my microphone not on? Do we have a audio problem, Eddie, right now?
Here.
Well, I'm sure they could hear me.
I speak loud enough.
Budget cuts.
Budget cuts? Mike, do I have to do this again, Eddie, or are we good? Yeah, no, I mean, could they hear me from the other mics? Okay, thank you. All right, Steve. Steve Crutch, here, please take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commission members. We do have two related requests tonight within Pebble Creek Phase One, the PAD Amendment and the Preliminary Platte. We have about 4.9 acres located here, just to the west of the Eagle Nest Clubhouse and other facilities. We have existing single-family development to the south, to the west, and to the north Right now, the property is currently utilized with a parking lot here on this north portion, undeveloped pad down here to the south. This building here was a home sales center, has since been demolished. PAD Amendment proposes to change this area here from clubhouse to urban residential low-density, so we're moving from this area here, blue, to the residential that is surrounding the amendment area here. And that PAD Amendment is to facilitate development of 16 residential lots, again, located here just to the west of the clubhouse. And intent is to put detached, single-family residential home product on these lots. Access would be to Ropes and Circle via Mulberry Lane and through the existing portion of Parking study was submitted with the PAD Amendment request, given that about 300 parking spaces could be removed with development of this area. That study concluded that at peak demand, the parking, the remaining parking would be able to meet the peak demand, and that those parking spaces could be removed. In reviewing this request, staff studied the compatibility of adding additional residential land use in this area. What we found is that the request could be compatible if the amendment area was reduced. As you can see in stipulation number two, we are recommending that three lots be removed, eight, nine, and 10 here, that area excluding that from the amendment request. Staff intent is to maintain an area similar to what is along the north side of the entry drive into the clubhouse. Basically, you have parking lot, landscaping, and open area framing the entry to the clubhouse. As stipulated, staff would find the PAD Amendment request to be compatible with the area. However, at this time, at the request of the applicant, we are recommending that this item be continued until May 19th. The applicant would like time to meet with area residents to go over various development alternatives. With that, Mr. Chairman, my part of the presentation is concluded. The applicant does have a presentation and would like some time at the end of the public discussion to come back up and talk to the Commission.
Okay. Questions of staff? Commissioner Williams?
Is the applicant gonna, I have a couple of questions. The applicant, is he gonna be up?
The applicant's gonna be coming up next. Steve, I have, I have a question. I looked at the parking study, and, if I can find it, there it is, and where you, and I was concerned, when I looked at the parking study, and they talked about the peak parking percentage usage table on, I believe, page, anyway, I think it's this, about the fourth page N. They had no usage for the arts, what is called the art, what they call the Arts and Crafts Building, which is now the Activity Center after 5:00. It's the last column. And my experience has been, as a resident of Pebble Creek, that this, this Arts and Crafts Center slash now Activity Center is utilized on several nights, and, and the parking is reasonably, you know, well utilized on those nights, so, you know, so I'm, so I'm questioning the, you know, I'm not questioning the total validity of the study, but I think there is some under-representation in what has been, you know, put forth. That's, that's my comments. If you have any comments that you want to rebut that or talk about it, I'll listen.
No rebuttal, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I can think of is with that stipulation number two, reduction of the amendment area, part of that would add additional parking, maybe 25 to 50 additional spaces onto what the applicant has shown with this parking study. So there would be additional spaces gained there.
All right. Okay, thank you. And please, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Steve Soriano. I'm with Ropes and Communities. My address is 9532 East Riggs Road in Sun Lakes, Arizona. Standing next to me is Mark Maloney, who's with B&amp;R Engineering, who are the engineers on the submittal. As, as Steve just said, we are requesting a continuance. We're doing that because we've gotten a lot of, a lot of good feedback over the last month or two, and a lot of negative feedback over the last month or two, of people unhappy with this plan, and, and based on staff's recommendation of making pretty dramatic changes to it, I think it makes a lot of sense for us as a developer to go back and meet with the homeowners and, and try and come up with something that's less negative for them. We, we sent in the request for the continuance too late to get, it had already been published that there'd be a meeting tonight, so, you know, so we understand that. And actually, we're looking forward to, to hearing what the concerns are. Can we, can we guarantee we'll adopt and address every single one of them? No, but, but we will, if it's okay, you know, if, if, if you guys do follow through with the continuance tonight, that'll give us time to meet with the homeowners, understand their concerns, try and meet as many of them as we can, and, and, and then come back to you with, with maybe the same plan, but maybe a modified plan that addresses the concerns.
As, as the Chair, I'm gonna, if, if, I'm gonna encourage you to do that, and I'm also gonna let, make sure that you, at the end of the public comment, I will allow you to come back and address any concerns that you might want. Is there anything else that you want to ask, say now, or can I open it up? Because there are some of the Commissioners who do want to have, who have questions for you.
I'm, this is my first time attending a hearing on this particular matter. There was a different person at the developer who was responsible for it. He passed away last year. This is my first meeting attending it. I can address most of the things. Whatever I can't address, I will, I will try and field with the engineer. And then there'll be things that neither one of us can address tonight, but we'll take notes of them and, and try and have answers for you when we're back in front of you, if, if you continue it. Right?
Okay. I'm gonna, questions? Luke? Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir. On, on that-
I'm sorry, did you want to speak some more?
No, no, I'm, no, I'm gonna try and do more listening tonight.
Okay.
On that corner of Ropes and Circle and Clubhouse Drive, and I live in Pebble Creek, and I've spent a lot of time there, the last two or three days, just walking around and looking at different angles. One thing I did, I counted 14 palm trees on that corner. Are those gonna stay? Will they all be there?
That's sketchy.
Yes, we are. We actually have a rendering that we did of the site now. This rendering basically covers the as proposed, per the original submittal here, but it does show the grassy area adjacent to, to not only Ropes and Circle, but the, the palm trees as well.
What, what we're about to put up is, is what was submitted. It may change based on what we hear tonight, but this will show you, and this, this will show you, this is a computer rendering, this is done on a computer, this is not what's existing right now. This is a computer rendering if you approve what's submitted, which we're asking for a continuance on. So it shows you how the palm trees would look after the fact, and we have houses pasted in there.
Do you, could, could you help them, can we zoom this in onto the corner that's into-
Or actually bring up the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we, we provide it on disk as well, or if, if this is easier.
This is probably easier, but if you could zoom, zoom it in on the, on the corner.
Let's, let's show both.
Is that better? Because that way you can see the before.
What I really want to, I want to show the public that, and if, just pull it down a little bit, so, there we go, so that they can see what, if, if the 16 lots were approved, this is what it's gonna look like.
If the 16 lots are approved, those houses that you see over there are kind of painted in with digitally, but that gives you an idea of which trees would remain, that gives you an idea of where the, the back of the lots would be of those 16 houses, or the ones that, that face back towards the parkway, and, and how much open space there'd be on the entrance.
Commissioner Williams? So virtually, that corner remains unchanged, and the driveway up to the main entrance and that traffic circle that, with the landscaped island at the main entrance to the clubhouse remains the same with the rows of palm trees on both sides and the landscaped median in the middle.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz, questions? I'm, I'm, I may have some questions, but I'll save them for later. Okay, are, you're, why don't you guys have a seat?
Thank you. Should we leave the photo there, or should we?
Yeah, just leave that photo there, and we'll just move it if we need to. Steve First, do you want to come up and speak, please? Please state your name for the, name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen, S.T.E.P.H.N.J., middle initial, First, F.E.R.S.C.H. I reside in Pebble Creek at 15495 West of Witten, W-H-I-T-21 Avenue in Goodyear. And I don't know whether this proposal that they're showing now is act, is the original one, because we were told that, turn upside down.
We're facing you.
Facing. We were told originally that the, this is the current open space with trees and the palm trees you're talking about. We were told that this would be a continuation of the wall. I am standing, well, relatively, I was here on the drive that has always come into Pebble Creek Parkway, and we were told that this road, which is on the other side to my other view, I took this shot, looking down the green space, open to the road that goes into Pebble Creek, I turned around and took this picture. And this is how, we were at least told, that the new one would actually block. To give you an idea, we're not very professional at this, but let me show you this. This is a rendering that we did, and it shows the houses and the fence, and it gives you a pretty good idea of what's gonna happen to the open space. Now, let me get back on point so that I don't take up any more time than necessary. Those of us living with 500 feet, within 500 feet, and I happen to be one of them, of the proposed change, the original plan for Eagle Nest Activity, received a notice of the request from the city, but the B&amp;R Engineering applied for change to the current standing planned area. It was also established a meeting for 21010 at Eagle's Nest Clubhouse with applicants. We found that the meeting brought up more questions than answers. The two engineers representing B&amp;E Engineering really were unable to answer the questions and concern of the homeowners. We, we received a second notice again to those 500 feet people, which informed us that the Planning Commission will take up the request of R&amp;B Engineering to change the current PAD on the 17th of March. Four homeowners who drafted this, our names are on it, will sign it, the original will go to Steve at Planning when I'm done, four of us worked together to get the ball moving, believing that the scheduled Planning Commission meeting would provide us with an opportunity to present our views on the changes to our Pebble Creek. We wrote a letter, signed by the four of us, we sent out emails within the Pebble Creek system, we scheduled meetings at our clubhouse, and the first thing we did was send a personal letter to Mr. Ed Robson, who has in the past met with homeowners on several occasions and been able to iron out problems without any disagreement between us. We realized after we had the petition started, we learned the city would rather have the address than the lot and unit numbers. So the ones I'm going to give to the city today will have the lot and unit numbers on them, I wanted them to, so they could be identified and, as residents of Pebble Creek. We'll take a copy home with us, and we will put the street addresses on the back for each name, and provide that to the city also. First, let me say that as a group, we have no axe to grind, except for this application of the master plan. Homeowners have met with Ed Robson in the past, and we sent him a letter and have called daily. Each call was answered the same. Leave a message, and someone will get back to you. Frank, one of the, the Steel, one of the members that signed this, has met twice with Ed Robson in the past, so we designated him as the official phone caller. Yesterday, he was passed, instead of the same answer, he was passed through to the executive secretary slash assistant, an attorney who works very closely with Ed Robson, and said that he had not known of this matter at this time, and that asked what we were doing, and we said we were circulating petitions. We have a, over 160 or 70 signatures at this date. We've had a little trouble getting the word out, because we have no means in Pebble Creek except door-to-door. So we made a short petition form with the map on the back, and I'm sure we'll, we could provide more. I understood today the delay had been asked for by R&amp;B Engineering, and we were pretty sure that would happen, because Mr. Robson's executive secretary slash assistant told Frank last night that with as many owners as are upset as there were, she was gonna recommend that they pulled the application and hold off until he met with homeowners once again. Our major concerns are, one, currently, all visitors, contractors, or anyone except the homeowner who has a windshield tag can only enter through the main gate. This change, this change will destroy the entire ambiance to the Eagle's Nest. Today's ambiance is, anyone who enters the main gate drives in beside a well-cared-for golf hole, all grass. Then at tops, at the stop sign of Robson Circle and Clubhouse Drive, they see green grass in front, and behind that, open space. This will change with this new lots being added. The change to the parking will reduce our ability to park, we will lose approximately 68.8% of parking sites. Many times, there is more than one event going on at a time. Often, it is difficult to find a space to park. Also, we lack the spaces to stage heavy equipment as required for any emergencies. There is no other parking facilities on Pebble Creek Eagle Nest side. I happen to belong to Poker Club, in fact, I was the first member, but we meet at the Arts and Craft, and I know that when there's more than one or two activities going on, especially if they've rented the Eagle's Nest Clubhouse for a wedding or something, it really gets pretty tough. There needs to be more than one way in and out of the clubhouse. I think for safety concerns, we have two now, and I think that to funnel all the people that live in Pebble Creek to play golf or whatever activity they have, to funnel them only on Pebble Creek driveway is not a good idea. I have a few photos that I would like to quickly put up. One other thing that I think is of interest, and this is one of the reason everything caused so much unaware, I should say, even the 210 source book that is produced by Robson Publishing, the map they put in, this edition, and this is a 210 that just came out, clearly shows-
Upside down.
Upside down. My life is like that. Okay. This plot, we are ready to concede to Robson. I mean, no, those are lots that were used for detention ponds during construction, and it was always in all of our minds that those would later be added to model home numbers or something, so we have no problem with that. This other area has always been open space and parking lots, and you can see that the Robson Company published the map for 2010 and left it just the same. So we had no inkling that there was a major change of rest until we started getting those notices. And the reason that four of us lived very close together is we're all, we were first notified and got going. So, the other problem we have is that up, up among the country club house, there, where the old sales office was, most of that is being converted into detention ponds to hold the extra water, I think, which is what the two lots up front did, that were gravel. And in that area, Robson plans, Robson Company plans to donate a parcel of land, which will be a veterans memorial, or whatever you want to call it. I bought two rocks, I couldn't figure out my, how to put it on one, but the point is, that now becomes blocked from any view unless you're going to the clubhouse, or unless you have some reason to drive over in the corner. It will be tucked neatly in and off. Losing open space or parking is not something most homeowners would be willing to do. Once they have been informed of all the changes, they will join us in objecting to these changes. The change to the PAD adds nothing to Pebble Creek except quick, easy sales for the Robson Company. And it's signed by the four of us, Dave Paulson, Frank Assio, myself, and Bill Casey, who put all this together. I can show you upside down. Okay. Here is the, here's the publishing page of Pebble-
You're up, you're still upside down. But, but Steve, you want to sort of wrap it up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that this is the resort, Pebble Creek Resort Book, and this was the first page, and the map was in there. All of this, I have copies for your people, and all of this will be left after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you, any, any publications that you want to give, please give to the Clerk of the Commission, Ms. Brooks over there?
I'll do that.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, if anybody wants to, I have four individual cards of people who have requested their three minutes, and, and I'm gonna, those people will get them, and I may have a fifth. But if anybody wants to speak on with, on the same points that Mr. First did, please come up, and we will listen, but please make it brief, if you're agreeing with him. Okay, otherwise, if, do you have a card, sir, back there?
Yes, he does. There are two more.
Bring them, two more? Okay, first, seeing nobody else asking for their one minute, Mark Pelletier, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Mark Pelletier. I live at 15742 West Fairmount in Goodyear, in Pebble Creek, about three-quarters of a mile from this proposal. My neighbor, Mr. First, is a longtime resident of Pebbles Creek and has spoken from that perspective. I'm a newbie, only four years in Pebble Creek, so I'm gonna confine my comments to specific concerns related to the official City of Goodyear Design Guidelines. But I do have to note that I find it notable that many of the people who are the most dismayed with this proposal are the very folks who have been in Pebble Creek from the very beginning. These are people who hold Ed Robson in near reverence, and have enjoyed the community that he created for the longest time. Parking is still a potential problem. Now, no one believes the entirety of the parking lot that was needed when the sales center was in operation is needed now, but I invite you to visit the community on Tuesday evenings, when the Poker Club, Mr. First, and the Railroad Club are using the Activity Center and filling that parking lot, and when Karaoke is held in the Eagle's Nest Clubhouse, which in my belief in four years is the most popular activity in Pebble Creek. You will find that the proposed remaining parking area is substantially utilized. I have further confirmed today, it should also be noted, that the far northeast aisle of the parking lot is designated for temporary oversized and commercial parking, since such parking on Pebble Creek streets is restricted. I have confirmed today with the Director of the Pebble Creek Patrol that indeed that aisle is restricted only for temporary parking of oversized and commercial vehicles, which have been registered with Patrol for that purpose. And indeed, that area is not available for general parking. Also, that area servicing no specific uses serves not only Eagle's Nest side of Pebble Creek, but the Tuscany side as well. The Director has confirmed that fact to me. I do not believe that this restriction on that area of the parking lot is reflected in the parking study that the, that the Chairman alluded to earlier. This eliminates 40 parking spaces from general parking, over 10% of the planned remaining 345 spaces. I have further documented for your review, I'm not gonna go through all this, the Clerk has a copy, some 15 references from the Planning and Zoning Design Guide document, which I believe merit consideration with respect to this proposal. These guidelines talk about visual diversity, open space, that one many, many times. These guidelines talk about visual diversity, open space, that one many, many times, preservation of existing views and natural features, continuous streets, and the proper use of walls. I have to say, I was very pleased with the extensive work of the City Planning Committee and their recommendation to this commission. They more than I am familiar with the guidelines and consistently strive to preserve the look and feel that we all enjoy in Goodyear. I'm a little, perhaps if I can ask, I thought that the initial documentation I saw at the website stated that lots seven, eight, and nine were recommended as excluded, but Mr. Cratchit, I believe you stated eight, nine, and 10 tonight. I certainly hope that Lot 10 would be included because had it indeed been seven, eight, and nine only, we would still not have a preservation of any view corridor toward the Eagle's Nest I'll conclude my remarks by citing three final quotes from the Planning Design Guidelines. One, open space must exhibit some window on the greater neighborhood. Wall-in spaces are not desirable. Two, a community should have a center focus. And finally, number three, the neighbor should have a discernible center. I believe the key word is discernible. I ask that this proposal be substantially modified to follow these city guidelines and indeed to preserve what Robeson communities themselves originally created. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Paulson, please. Come up. You don't have to take all three minutes if you want to.
My name is David Paulson. I live at 15498 West Mulberry Court, Goodyear, in Pebble Creek. And I agree with what Mr. Firsch had to say and echo the remarks that Mark had.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Stample, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, my name is Steve Stample. I live at 3427 North 153rd Lane, about a half a block down the street that's being, where the pad proposal is. And I totally agree with the previous parties. I think 16 homes is too many, 13 homes is too many, and we need considerably less than that.
All right. Thank you very much. Frank Castillo?
Yes, my name is Frank Castillo, and I live in 3640 North 154th Lane. We've been in the community for 15 years since the beginning, and one item was missing from Mr. Firsch's presentation, and is that we didn't understand without approval how some of the parking lot is being torn down, and I believe is not proper to do that until you get approval. So, that, in addition to that, I do agree 100 percent with the previous speakers, and we hoping that the Robeson community stays as a Robeson community like it was and it still is, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I apologize for the pronunciation right off the bat. Al or Dorothy Jukestock? Was I close? No. We'll find out in a minute.
Alan Dorothy Jackstock at 3554 North Hogan Drive in Pebble Creek. We've been there 12 years, and we came there because it was described as a Pebble Creek resort area. The resort is turning into a housing project if we allow this additional 16 units come in, and a resort really has the connotation coming along with it that says it has open areas, not walled in in housing projects. So, we would like to support the remarks of the previous speakers, saying we don't think we need this, we don't think it'd be an attribute to Pebble Creek, and we would support the other speakers and their positions regarding this request to put 16 lots in the parking lot. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Collins. I'm at 15716 West Amelia Drive in Goodyear, in the Eagle's Nest side of Pebble Creek. I wanted to reinforce one of Steve's comments about access and egress. We only, if this is blocked, we only have one street coming in there, and that, I think emergency vehicles need better access to the clubhouse than that, when you can have something with several hundred people in it. I think that single access through Clubhouse Drive presents a risk that we should consider. The other point that hasn't been brought up yet is that parking area that is proposed to be eliminated has a long history of being where the buses come in to pick up passengers and then drop them off afterwards, and we enjoy a constant stream of buses to the casinos, to trips, to just all kinds of things that are, in fact, established by the Activities Committee, Activities Group. And the advantage of that area is that it's easy to access for a bus. It's easy to turn in, it's easy to pull over, there's plenty of room for the passengers to park there and keep out everyone else's way, and then it's easier for the, easy for the bus to exit out the road that is now proposed to be blocked. So, I, it, I'm sure it's not in the parking study, but it's something, and to try to put the buses over to the Tuscany side, I think is tough. If you remember how those driveways are made, it's not really great turning area for a bus, and it's not nearly as handy. Just wanted to bring that up, and I do, I do support the other items that were brought up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody else like to speak on this matter publicly?
Could I ask a question?
In a minute.
Thank you. My name is Tom Burford. I live at 15726 West Amelia Drive. What I'd like to find out is, the parking study that was conducted, there are still 2,000 to 2,500 homes that are not even built across the street. So, we're taking eliminating parking spaces that aren't being utilized right now, but the homes aren't built across the street. So, when it is full, where are those people going to park?
May I respond to that? Parking studies are done based on the square footage of the buildings that encompass the general area, so that when this parking, when this parking study was done, they looked at the Eagle's Nest clubhouse and said it has X thousand square feet, therefore it needs so many parking spaces. The Activity Center has so many thousand square feet, it needs, requires this, tennis, golf, et cetera. So, that the parking study looks at every activity that is in the general area of the Eagle's Nest clubhouse. The other 3,000 homes that are waiting to be built on the Tuscany side will not generate additional parking in the Eagle's Nest side because of the square footage of the building and fire restrictions, et cetera. So, the parking study does have some validity, and if you want to analyze it, I'm sure staff would be happy to give you a copy of it.
Okay. So, in other words, the building can support more?
The building, the occupancy of the building is 500 people for whatever, and those 500 people are assuming that they bring one and a half cars, therefore you have to have so many parking spots for those if all 500 people show up at one time. That's the way a parking study is done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Firsch, you have a minute.
I don't need a minute. I just thought if you had asked how many people came in support of the Pebble Creek position, you would have far fewer people coming up here, and would give you a good idea on St. Pat's Day how many people are serious about the problem.
I know you're going to turn in a petition of names to the clerk, so if you wanted to tell me how many people you have signed, we'll take that under advisement.
We have 170 something so far.
Okay. We have, we've noted that number.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me. Could I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
My name is Jim Tweet. I live at 3441 North 153rd Lane. If you grant a continuance today, what would the process be? Would it set it back a month or longer? And the reason I ask is, a lot of us in the area are snowbirds, and by the time this gets before you again, we'll probably be gone. Could we provide input, emails?
You can provide input to the staff planner, whose name is on all of the documents. If you go to the City of Goodyear website and you look at this agenda item, you can provide email comments. You can also provide email comments to your council people, several of whom live in Pebble Creek, and they'd be happy to get it. Or you can provide a comment to the Goodyear City Clerk, and they will distribute it to all of the city council members and the mayor. From a procedural point of view, if this is continued, it looks like it will come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in May. It may come back in this original form, it may come back in an altered form, most probable, I won't say anything more. Then, from there, we'll go to the city council for, with a planning commission recommendation. So, you're looking at June, July, probably, when the final disposition would happen, if everything goes according to plan.
Thank you for the information.
Mr. Steve, Mr. Robeson's representative, please come up and address the commission because you wanted to say some things, and we'll see if there's any other questions.
A couple of things. Number one is, my name's Steve Soriano, so in addition to all the venues for comments that you just laid out for the gentleman, can I give my phone number?
Yes. Could you provide your email address to the clerk?
Okay. My last name is Soriano, S-O-R-I-A-N-O, at Robeson.com. So, my email address is Soriano@Robeson.com, and that's another, in addition to those other ways of contacting us, that's another way. As I've told you before, our request is a continuance to May 19th, which is not the next meeting, but the one after that. The one in April, I think, is too soon for us to get in front of the homeowners, talk through our side of, you know, our side of what we'd like and why we'd like it, and then incorporate something into a next plan. So, that's why we requested the May 19th. We heard the comments today, and they're legitimate, and we'll take them into consideration, and we will come back with a, if we're continued, I mean, if you want to approve it, you know, no, but, but we'll come back with something that takes parking into consideration, we'll come back with something that takes the view corridor into consideration. I can stand here and come up with answers to some of the questions, and in fact, I think you can oppose some of the questions now, but it sounds like the plan that we have currently submitted is not ready. It sounds like the plan that we have currently in front of you is, can probably be refined.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other further comments? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will call for a commission action, and then we will have commission, first we'll have commission comments, then we'll have action on this.
Should I say?
Just have a seat. Commission comments.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments because we don't know what it's going to look like in May, so.
Okay. Commissioner Schlosser?
That would be my comment as well, and I'd make a motion to continue until a future meeting.
Okay.
And I think we, as commissioners, should reserve our comments, just my personal opinion. We've heard everybody tonight, and I appreciate everybody, everybody coming. I thank the applicant for asking for a continuance to try to work some of these issues out, but I think it's in our interest, at least at this point, my personal opinion, is for us as commissioners to withhold our comments until we see what everybody works out in the future. And with that, I'd make a motion to continue.
All right. Commissioner Williams?
Well, I pretty much agree with Commissioner Schlosser, and I would like to say to Mr. Robeson, you know, Mr. Robeson, and you all build great communities, you know, and I applaud you, your efforts to work with the community on this one.
Vice Chair?
I'll say a second to the motion.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if you need the motion, we need it to a specific date, so I believe it was suggested May, a meeting of May 19th.
Okay. I will, will you amend your motion? Sure. Or?
I amend it to the May 19th meeting.
Second.
All right. The chair, I will reserve my comments before you depart, Mr. Soriano. I want to give you something, and we'll leave it at that. All those, I have a motion from Commissioner Schlosser, I have a second from the vice chair, Commissioner, Vice Chair Lacks. All those in favor of continuing this till the May 19th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Done. Okay. Next item. As the chairman, I want to thank everybody who came to the meeting. We do appreciate you coming out. Again, send comments on this to your city council people, send comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will get them, send comments to Robeson.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you again for coming.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind you, you need to take an action on the plat as well.
We'll do, we'll, we're going to continue that right away. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to call to order case 095000006, Pebble Creek, Phase 1, Unit 1A, preliminary plat. Can I have a motion to continue that to the May 19th?
Move to continue to May 19th meeting?
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, a second from Commissioner Schlosser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I gave this, I gave this to Jack about a week and a half ago. I'm going to give it to you. I think, you know, worked with staff, I think I talked with Mark about it, and, oh, that Mark, at the neighborhood meeting, I would, you know, I don't know where it's going, but I think if it's something, something less, you can probably get more than half, you won't get all of it, although some of the commissioners might support all of it, who knows? So, I'm just saying, if you want to come in and fly through, a word to the wise.
Okay.
Keep that clubhouse drive view, you know, I mean, when you're stopped at that stop sign of Robeson Circle, and you're drawing straight down that avenue to the main entrance to the clubhouse, to that roundabout that's well landscaped.
The other thing I do want to say to you, you work for Robeson, right? I want to thank you for coming, and I want you to know that we really do appreciate you showing up. And when we have other plats that are over in the Tuscany side, they will, as normal, probably fly through, and you will not have to show up. So, this is out of the ordinary, and I just want, I want you to know that we're not busting your chops just to bust your chops. That's okay. But you've learned, and, you know, and we'll move on.
Is what's, one of those tiers of parking is under construction, it's part of it's ripped up. What's going on there?
That's, I think, for the veterans.
I think it's the second one.
We're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on case zero nine two zero 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 one two, Australia Mountain Ranch, parcels twelve point three seven, twelve point three nine, twelve point four zero, and twelve point four one, Planned Area Development, PAD Amendment. And Ms. Craver is going to make the presentation in a minute when she gets, when she gets back with us. Sorry, Karen. We just wanted to move it along.
Did you introduce the item?
Yes, I did. You're up.
Okay. This is a fifty-one acre site east of Australia Parkway, right here, and south of the Elliott Road extension here. And for reference purposes, the Australia Parkway, Cotton Lane, roundabout is up here. The city fire station is here. And the San Miguel, Australia Parkway intersection is here. The existing Australia Phase One PAD currently designates the parcels as church, two multifamily, and one townhouse. The proposed amendment changes all four to single family, with a maximum density of three point nine DUs per acre, dwelling units per acre. With the approved PAD, the three residential parcels may currently be developed with six hundred and twenty-eight units, and the amendment reduces the dwelling unit count to one hundred and eighty-eight. The amendment proposes this lot layout with two points of access to Australia Parkway, one being via Spring Street here in front of the fire station, and the other further south on Australia Parkway. Adjacent land uses include existing single family to the west, the future Elliott Road, and approved commercial office, multifamily and townhouse uses to the north. The future Cotton Lane extension will come along here. There's an existing power line corridor right here. These are some city water facilities here. And there's an additional parcel here that's currently designated commercial, but will in all likelihood go to single family as well. The amendment is proposed to provide additional opportunities for potential home buyers looking for smaller, more affordable, single-family lots in a location that is more appropriate for single-family development than for the multifamily and townhouse development. Development standards are also proposed that allow for typical architectural features that you would find in larger homes, on larger lots, on the smaller homes, on the smaller lots. The amendment is compatible with the existing single-family development and future commercial development north of Elliott Road, and that will include buffers to minimize impact on the residential. Staff is recommending approval with ten stipulations. And I have a favor to ask you on stipulation number four, that being pertaining to water and sewer capacity information. If you could please change that to prior to final plat approval. The other two cases that were before you first amendments were changed to final plat approval. So if you could please do that with your motion. Two of the stipulations, number five and number six, pertain to right-of-way dedication and provisions for roadway construction and intersection signalization for Elliott Road and Cotton Lane. The two planned roadways are adjacent to the project, and therefore, we've recommended obligations that tie into the final plat approval for parcel two point four one, which would be this parcel up here. It requires right-of-way dedication, either construction or in-lu payment, and signalization of the intersection. Newland is objecting to these stipulations. We had offered up a suggestion of a development agreement that would allow for some future time certain meeting of those obligations. But it's my understanding they are still objecting. So Mr. Prescott is here and will speak to that.
Questions of staff. Commissioner Williams?
Will there be access to the Elliott Road extension?
No, that is not proposed and it was not deemed necessary by staff.
Karen, could you elaborate on that? Because I looked at that cul-de-sac up at the north end of section forty-one. And, and I looked at this and I just, I was just kind of amazed that we only have two entrances and exits into this, this whole area. And I, I really, you know, can you justify that for me? Because Commissioner Williams looked at it and questioned it, and I'm sitting there questioning it. And I really think we need, that needs to go through to Elliott Road.
We had had some initial discussions at the staff level. The first submittal that came through did not have this additional roadway here that ran parallel to this one. So we were concerned that there would be too much traffic, too many vehicles going by those lots to come out to this exit. But with this additional one, we felt it broke up the traffic within the subdivision. It does provide the two access points, which are required for fire provision services, safety purposes. And, and we felt that with the split in the traffic here, some folks coming out this way, some folks coming out that way, it would evenly divide the traffic within the subdivision.
Where does, is, is, is West Spring Drive a drive? So in other words, where, where you said where parcel forty comes out by parcel forty and thirty-nine, where it curves up? Does it go into West Springs Drive and that goes into Australia Parkway?
Yes, yes. This roadway comes here, it comes to Spring Drive, at the same location as a drive coming from this area. Then it comes out onto here and up Australia Parkway. There's a full median cut there, so traffic can go north or south. And there's a full median cut down here as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lacks, Vice Chair. Hey, Mr., any other questions of staff? Mr. Prescott?
I'm always trying to adjust the lighting on this thing. David Prescott, representing Newland Communities at twenty-eight fifty East Comback Road, Phoenix, Arizona. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Newland agrees with the staff's recommendation for approval. However, as Karen mentioned, we do have some objection to a couple of stipulations which I'll talk to about. Basically, there's five points that I would like to make. And I was kind of hoping that this hearing would be a lot easier than the last couple I've had, but maybe not. First one, on the, first point I'd like to make is on segmentation. The reason why we're doing this, we did a segmentation study. We don't have the product mix that's in sync with the market. So we're going through, in particular, we're trying to go through and introduce a small lot for a couple of different buyer groups, which are the most active portions of today's market. We're trying to jumpstart the project to get more home building activity in there, to get things back going, because there hasn't been much activity with the economy in the last couple of years, and that's part of the reason why we're doing this. That is the reason why we're doing this, and I'll talk about a couple of things in a second. The next is the reduction of units. Karen mentioned we're going from six hundred and twenty-eight multifamily units to one hundred and eighty-eight single-family units. The only reason why we would do that is because we need to go and attack the market to get things, to get things going together and get development going, to get into the project, into master plan. Or we could sit around and wait for the multifamily to come, which will probably be about five years from now. The reduction is very important because that reduces the impact on traffic, schools, water, you know, sewer, that kind of thing, so it's good for infrastructure. The proposed single-family is consistent, as Karen mentioned, with the adjacent development Avalon Delago next door, and also the subdivisions across on the other side of Australia Parkway. The one thing I would like to mention, because I think the Chair brought up a good point about the access point up here. There is the main reason why we ended up, first of all, we did a traffic study because staff brought up the discussion ago, show us that that will work. So we hired task engineering, did a traffic study. Basically, traffic study comes back and says, you've got one hundred and eighty-eight units. Each entrance can handle a hundred units. So there's not an issue with, in terms of traffic flow this way. And it also, they also did analysis to make sure we are not creating any problems with the access for the fire department. That is, that is a collector street there. It's not a local street, so it's wider than normal. And, and also, the traffic study showed that the traffic was moving down to the high school and then up to the north and, and, and so we, first of all, we had to show staff that the traffic study shows we don't need the entrance out to Elliott Road, because that was one of the very first things they brought up. The next thing we did is we created the secondary loop design to meet subdivision design guidelines, because you cannot have a cul-de-sac over a certain length. The next thing, and the main reason why we did this, is because of the economy and because of this whole issue about going after the single-family versus multifamily, is the fact that there is no debt. You can't go out and just borrow money in today's economy and go and construct or throw money into a capital project. We are trying to use existing infrastructure. That is why we have been going through these series of debates with adjacent neighborhoods, because we're basically coming in and doing infill of the existing streets, water and sewer. So, you know, it's to capture those existing infrastructure and utilize that, so we don't have to borrow money, which you can't borrow anyway, or you can borrow at twenty percent interest, and go in and build roads. And when you go in and do a simple thing like Elliott Road here, or Cotton Lane along here, you don't just do a half width street of paving. You've got to put in the sewer and the water and everything else underground. You can't just slap the road in. So there's a fair amount of money involved. There's between two and three million dollars in those, those two sets of improvements. You can't go borrow that money. You can't go and do the single-family development unless you reuse existing infrastructure. That is the reason why we worked so hard not to provide the access point to Elliott Road. Otherwise, if this was a normal economy and we didn't have all these financing issues and everything else you're dealing with, we probably, probably wouldn't even given a second thought. The only other issue we came up with this is you have to maintain a certain separation distance from the intersection to Cotton Lane to the entrance on Elliott Road. And quite frankly, you need five hundred feet to make the turning movements work, and there isn't enough distance there to do that, and that was the other reason. So, moving on, the third point is about the separation. When we met with the neighborhood, we had about thirty people attend the meeting. There is a swale that runs in between what we're proposing and existing Avalon Delago homes. And there's a swale there, and I'll show you a photograph. And the swale is about fifty-five feet wide. And what they were asking me was, can you make the swale wider? Because, so the houses would be further away. And the answer is no, because then I can't do the subdivision. And the other question is, can you not have two-story homes? And I told them, no, I won't agree to that, but you're, you're, you can bring it up at the hearing and I'll explain why I don't agree with that. And here's why. This is, this is the photograph, this is a photograph of the swale. These are the backside of the existing homes. This is the swale, it's about fifty-five to sixty feet across, this swale. And these are all view fences. We will also, when we build up across the other side, we will also put in the same view fences. And when you go around the, here's another picture of the same swale. When you go around all of Australia and all the washes and all the different spaces, open spaces, we always put the same view fence up. Sometimes they're black instead of this color. But we put up the same view fences in the homes face across these open spaces to each other, whether it's a single story or, or, or two-story. Here's, here's a photograph inside Avalon Delago, in between one of the washes it goes in. It shows you that I'm obviously standing next to somebody's backyard, looking across to the backyard across the way, and this is the normal development. And I guess what I want to point out is, when you go through and look at this fencing, if, whether you're in a one-story home or a two-story home, because of view fences, you can always see in people's backyards. So there is, whether you have a two-story or a one-story, the privacy issue is identical. And that is exactly the same way all over Australia. This is not just in this particular one case where the swale is. And this is the illustration I did to show what it kind of looks like when it gets done, to give you the distances. Basically, the homes, the existing homes, the backyards are twenty to forty feet setback. You've got fifty-five to sixty feet between rear lot lines, and each one has their own view fence. And then you've got, the two-story homes would probably be set back a little bit further. The minimum setback we have is fifteen feet. But the two-story homes, because they have a smaller footprint, and because the houses will be moved up to the front to, to save the cost of the, of the concrete for the driveway and the water line, the sewer line, everything else, they move it up twenty feet from the street, which means that you've got a hundred and fifteen-foot deep lot. You can basically have a thirty or forty-foot rear yard. So the houses would be, you know, a hundred to a hundred and thirty feet apart. So I guess I just want to illustrate that that's why I didn't want to go with the, not allowing the two-story. The other thing is the fact that the residents told me in the neighborhood meeting that they were told that it was going to all be preserved in behind them, which we've heard this discussion before. So I pulled out the, the, the public report, subdivision public report. And on page four, it says, it identifies to the east, it's going to be a wash, open space, natural landscaping, and possible single-family residential. So that's what the public report was told. They're also told that there's going to be the three oh three freeway, which we have that since got rid of the freeway and put in the scenic arterial for Cotton Lane. On to point number five, my last point, and this is about the stipulations that Karen brought up. The reason why we're objecting to the stipulations, the official reason is that we don't think there's a nexus, because the property doesn't have access to these streets, so we really don't need to put them in. We don't want, we don't, you can't go in and borrow the money to do it anyway, which means you wouldn't be able to do the single-family development. And when we go through in a master plan community, when we went through and developed Willis Road, which is a mile and a half long, we developed West Tower Drive. We did not do it on piecemeal across from existing frontages of parcels. We did it under development agreements with large sections at one time. And they run probably anywhere from one point seven to three million a shot. So that's how we would probably do Cotton Lane and Elliott Road. We would not do it on individual parcel by parcel. In these stipulations, they have, they've done something different than what they ran past the city a year ago. Across the street. This, this, this was part of a PAD amendment, this parcel right here, across the street. And the stipulation that was, was recommended by approval by this commission and was approved by city council, had entirely different language, which we did agree to. And the language basically states, I don't know if you can read that with the lighting, but basically, stipulation five, six, same stipulations, but basically, five says that we will dedicate all that necessary right-of-way whenever the city says they need it. And we agreed to do that. And then number six says that about the traffic light and the roundabout or whatever they're going to put in. They don't mention roundabout here, they mention traffic light. But though, that we would make a proportional contribution if it's not, if they're not collecting fees through the infrastructure improvement plan or through the arterial streets development impact fee, which I think we should have the same language here. So I was asking staff, why are we not having exactly the same language as we had last year on a much larger parcel across the street? And, you know, quite frankly, I, I don't disagree with the policy that you should be doing that. But this is a master plan, it's a little bit different. Obviously, we're going to build Cotton Lane. We'll probably, we'll probably build a whole section of Cotton Lane at once, not just, you know, one corner or whatever. And you can't build half of it, because the sewer goes under one half and the water goes under your half, so you can't do it that way anyway, so. Anyway, I guess that's. So um, anyway, I guess that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Anybody from the commission? Okay. Have a seat close by because I'm sure you'll get called back up. Okay, anybody from the public like to make a comment on this case? Yes, ma'am?
I have questions.
Come on up. State your name, ask your question.
My name is Carleen Brookins. I live at one-one-one-one-five South Copper Court. And I just have a question as to why parcel thirty-eight, just one parcel, is um, will be townhomes in the midst of all of these single-family homes?
Will be townhomes?
It looks like it says T H, townhomes. Is that it?
Karen, do you want to answer that one? I thought thirty-eight was going to be a church.
This parcel, parcel thirty-eight is owned-
Put a picture, wait, Karen, could you put it up, the map? And so the people in the audience can see. Thank you.
This parcel, parcel thirty-eight is owned by a different owner other than Newland, who owns all of these parcels. Newland contacted them, said, why don't you come in on this P A D amendment with us? They chose not to. So that's simply the current approved P A D designation, townhomes. Once single-family homes develop around it, I would certainly think we'll see them coming in firm amendment as well. But they did not choose to join with Newland right now.
Is that a church, Karen? I remember reading that in the, in the, in the write-up.
You've got restrictions on it, right, about a church too?
Um, Mr. Chairman, members, commission and resident. The um, the property is currently owned by a bank. I think um it's, the C C and R's under the purchase agreement require a church to be there. So they would have to come in and rezone for a church. We basically asked them if they would be interested in coming in and joining us in a single family and we would remove that C C and R and they chose not to, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, seeing nobody else, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will have some commission discussion, comments. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that uh, that road, I forget the name. I think that it makes sense. Yeah, Elliot Road.
The one on the north end?
You know, I, I would like to see an entrance there to the neighborhood, but considering the five-hundred-foot limit that you need to, you know, have property ingress and egress, you know, I'll take the word for it. But, you know, if there's not any connection to that road, I don't, I agree that, you know, maybe the developers shouldn't have to put that road in.
Okay. Commissioner Schlosser, comments?
I agree with that as well. After Mr. Prescott explained that, it seemed to make sense. Um, I also would like to comment, we still don't have, I don't think, a a grocer down there. And the applicant made a very good point about multifamily. Before multifamily gets built down there, I'm going to be living in Pebble Creek. It's going to be a long, it's going to be a long time from now. Um, and then can you elaborate on the stipulations again?
Yeah, we, we put in a stipulation, two stipulations that uh required dedication of right-of-way for Elliot Road and for Cotton Lane and for the applicant to either construct those half-street portions of those roadways or make an in-loo payment so that when additional funding and additional uh development occurred, the money would be available to do the construction. Uh, we put in a stipulation for signalization of the intersection of Elliot and Cotton. Uh, twenty-five percent would be their share of that total cost. And again, tied everything to the final plat for parcel forty-one, which is the furthest north, most likely the last one to develop. So therefore, those obligations are moved further out than current day. And when Newland objected to that, we thought, well, let's work out a development agreement like David had mentioned, had been done with other parcels and and come up with a time certain to make this happen. And and Newland chose us, chose not to take us up on our offer.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Does that answer your, your question? I think so, yes. Okay. Commissioner Williams? No comments? Vice Chair?
I appreciate the fact that, that Newland is, is trying to do some alternative things um in order to uh incent or or spur additional development in the area. But I'm, I'm not yet convinced, though, that for this particular parcel or these particular parcels, right in between two relatively um major thoroughfares, that moving to more single-family residential would be appropriate. Um, uh, whether or not the, the church remains on parcel forty-one, you know, that, that's uh, I'm, I'm sort of ambivalent about that. But, but I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to keeping the multi, multifamily um as, as currently proposed. And, and so I'm, I'm not yet convinced that, that a threshold to, to change zoning has been met, at least in this case yet.
Commissioner Williams? Or who, who wanted?
Well, it might, might, might be an off-the-wall comment. And maybe not appropriate, but I'm going to make it anyway. I mean, since Amaranth went away and Amaranth was going to have a large share, wasn't it, of, of lower-income housing? And with that going away, you know, doesn't, isn't, isn't Mr. Prescott's segmentation study valid? That we do need some of that kind of housing available?
I think he's talking with you. I guess that wasn't my comment. I, 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 I really agree with the segmentation study that Newland has done. Um, you know, I'll make my comments. My issue is the development agreement. And um, I understand where Newland's coming from and I understand where staff's coming from. And um, where the chair is coming from is we're going to give Newland three options. And the, the three options, you might as well come on up here, David, because you're going to get to, to tell me which, what you want me to do. Um, we're going to, the three options really, for the most part, are we can continue this and you can work it out with staff so that there's some kind of development agreement to assure the construction of Elliot and Cotton Lane. And we, we know that that's in the future, um, and, and that, and we won't do it. We can approve this case with the one change of, in stipulation four, um, of a final plat. But basically stipulation five and six are not going to change. Or we can deny it. And then you can go before city council. And if they deny it, then you can come back a year from now, you know. So we're looking at um twenty, late summer twenty-eleven, when it would probably resuperculate again. So, so I'm going to, so I'm kicking the ball back in your court. You can, if you get a continuance, um, you may be able to work something out. If you want it approved the way it's written, with the exception of the final plat, we can do that. I'm sure we can do that for you. Um, or we can deny it. I'm sure we can do that too. Um, or we may have a split vote and then it'll fail because we need a four, we need four affirmative votes for it to pass.
I guess I would, I would say stipulation two at this point of, of the three you're offering. I would, I obviously stipulation, I mean, uh, number two, which is approved, was changes to stipulation number four. I'd still like five and six to, to be changed. But I understand, uh, I prefer not to have the continuance and obviously I don't want the denial.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Can I have a motion to approve with a change to stipulation four for final plat, please? From one of the commission members? And-
So that's what staff's requesting?
Yes, yes. We, we, the only change would be on stipulation four, where instead of the word preliminary plat, it would be a final plat. And we would go with the wording in stipulation five and six as written.
That is staff's recommendation.
I'll, I'll make that motion. If nobody wants to make a motion, I think we could die for the lack of a motion, right?
I'd make that motion. I want to comment on Bob's comment as far as the big picture again on the multifamily argument. They obviously have plenty of land that's going to last a long, long, long time. And one of the problems that these, back to the grocery store, the problems with this economy and everything you've been reading in the papers and been hearing. The, the problem that these grocery stores have are they, in fact, they think they, they say they have enough rooftops down there. But to jumpstart this thing, we can't even support multifamily up in this neck of the woods with ballparks and feature malls and retail and everything. So I think there's room in the future for, for other planning for multifamily. So I think that's a valid point. But I would make that motion.
I have a question for staff. Developmental impact fees, don't, won't they take this road into account? I mean, or why, why have the extra stipulation if the diff fees aren't, I mean, are they not adequate or?
Arterial street impact fees that are prepara- that are paid that will go towards Cotton Lane, but they will not go towards Elliot Road. She looks at her boss for approval. Right?
Okay.
Bob, do you want to elaborate anything? The commission will, will take your, take, take education at this point in time. If you would like to say a comment, and if you don't, I understand.
The city's arterial street impact fee pays for construction to a certain degree relative to arterial streets. And basically, if you've got a three-lane road, you know, the impact fee will pay for one lane of that and adjacent development pays for two or vice versa. It does, it doesn't pay for all arterial streets. We get mostly arterial streets improved by development and then by arterial streets. But it certainly does not cover collector roads such as Elliot. So the issue here we have is if, if we don't have the adjacent development improve it or the master developer doesn't improve it, then who does improve it? It would only be left to the city and the city's arterial impact fee does not cover that.
Mr. Chairman, earlier Mr. Prescott mentioned there's a stipulation from a previous approval that the commission did a year or so ago, I don't know. Um, why is this different or why does that one not work? Yeah, I guess is my question.
Uh, the, the development he's referring to is, is this one here. And I wanted to show you this too in terms of the concerns about the multifamily. It isn't necessarily going away. It was relocated with this previous approval in this North Service Corps, where there's more intense development is where multifamily is going to be located and probably more appropriately so. Um, in terms of the requirement not being put in place at, at the time of, of this development for, for construction monies, I, I guess it's, you know, it, it's a lesson learned as we continue to do this. We've had projects in the past where we've, we've requested monies and then the project goes away and then we've got no money. So we're trying to get it now upfront with this project.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds to me that Mr. Prescott in Newland Community wants Elliot Road there. Is that correct? And that, it, from what I gathered, they wouldn't mind contributing to the cost of that. They just, is that incorrect?
I guess it's a matter of timing.
Of the ti- of the timing or the wording of this just didn't click with them.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Peters. We don't have an issue with building Cotton Lane down the road or Elliot Road just like we have built every other major road down there. The city has not, uh, I mean, I, there's two C F Ds and everything else. But I think that Newland or its predecessors built all the roads and landscape and everything. Um, what I think will happen is that this section right here is where parcel forty-one is the stipulation applies and then there's Elliot Road. I think that all this from the traffic circle all the way down to, probably down to where the, uh, the road's going to, there's going to be co- West, West Star Drive will have to cut across between Estrella Parkway and Cotton Lane north of where the city park is. I think you'll probably see us come through and take a look at developing that whole thing at once. And we probably need to sit down with the city and figure out how to do that. You can do G O bonds, there's different ways of doing it. And there's, you tie it back to the C F D so you get reimbursement based on assessed value of the adjacent properties. And this Elliot Road connection here will probably get developed when they do the commercial parcel, which is parcel forty-two. Because uh this connection around for parcel forty-two, you want that connection. And they'll also, uh, where Elliot Road connects right up here, where we're talking about, here's parcel forty-one, this road continues all the way up around through and up to Estrella Parkway. So it creates a loop that loops in the backside here. And then there's a little private road that runs back to the resort hotel. So we're not going to try to sell property and not make road improvements or not put in sewer and water. It isn't going to happen. But um, for some reason, it got tied to this one parcel at a time when we know we can't go in and get the debt to go, go do it. And also the cost, if you tie all that cost to this one subdivision, you make it infeasible to develop it. That's, that's the only reason. I, I think that the long-term, staff is trying to protect the long-term interests of the city, which is what they should be doing. I'm just trying to say that the policies and that are in place don't always work in every case exactly right. And this is probably one of them. And I wish I could tell you that I could go through and agree to the development agreement. I've been advised we're not going to do that. So um, I think down the road, that's exactly how it would get done is, and that's how we've done all these other major roads, is, is through development agreements. I don't know how else you would do it. I don't think major roads like this should be tied to a zoning case now like this, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, is there, is there a, a uh stipulation that would be agreeable, that would demonstrate the commitment to build those roads? I, I understand the city doesn't want to be left holding the bag on something like this. So, you know, I'd like to see a commitment, but, you know, tying it to this specific, um, you know, plat doesn't, for, to me, doesn't make sense.
Um, I'm, the sense of the commission, David, is right now we, we have a motion on the floor. We haven't gotten a second, but I'm sure we can get a second to approve it as written. Um, we can approve this, but I don't think, but, but trust me, it's not going to get approved. You're not going to like it because this is the way council will approve it and you're not going to like it. So it behooves you to either get a development agreement done or provide a performance bond that says we're going to do Elliot Road and Cotton Lane and provide that to the city. Um, or you're going to be a year and a half away from this. I, I'm just telling you the facts of life. And if you don't like the facts of life coming from the chair, I'm sorry.
Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman, I always appreciate your advice. Um, and if you, if you really, if the commission believes it behooves us to go back, get a continuance, go back and work out some kind of language for a development agreement and then come back to you, that's the best alternative, then please give me that direction.
Like I said, I, I mean, we'll approve it. And if you want, if you can work a development agreement out between now and when it goes to council that will modify this, this, this stipulation, we'll live, we, we, the commission, I think, can live with that. If, if, but if you want a continuance, we'll give you that. You know, you give us the direction that you think you want to, you want to handle, you want.
I think the, um, Mr. Chairman, the advice you just brought up about making a recommendation, the change of stipulation and then giving us direction that we need to go through and pursue some alternative language between now and city council, basically, to me, accomplishes the same, same thing as continuing and going back and redo. Basically, you're giving me direction, you need to go back and rework this with staff and work, rework some language that's agreement with the city and Newland. And I completely understand that and I don't have problems.
I don't want to waste the- I don't want to waste the commission's time, and I don't want to drag this along, but I'm telling you, if it goes, if, if it, if we pass this, it's going to go to council, and you don't fix this, it's not going to pass. I, I mean, that's my best guess.
It's going to pass with stipulations I don't like, right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Does everybody?
To amend my motion to what he said.
Is that, is that, is that okay? You know, will you amend your motion so that we recommend that staff and?
I always prefer that the applicant works things out with staff before they get before us.
Would there be a poison though?
Could we have a motion to table it? And that would be to a time uncertain. When you continue it, you need a time certain. But if you table it, it's a time uncertain that, no?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I.
I'm sorry.
I, I judge that the sense of the commission is to recommend approval of this, subject to staff's recommended stipulation with direction to staff and the, and the applicant to work out the language on these two contentious stipulations prior to going to council.
Yes. That, that's fine with me. Is that fine with the commission, Sean?
Well, the motion is to approve, and then aside from that, you're asking staff and the applicant to work it out.
The chair is going to take it upon himself to, can I make a motion? All right. The, the chair is recommending that we approve this case with the direction to staff and the applicant to come up with some type of advisi, amenable stipulations for five and six, and that stipulation four be changed to final plat. I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the chair, second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Is that okay? Bless my chops. You're welcome. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on case ten three zero 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 one. Centerra Crossings Fuel Station and Convenience Store Use Permit, Public Hearing. Ms. Craver is going to make the presentation.
Okay. This is a one point eight two acre site that is part of a thirty-two acre commercial parcel within the overall Centerra PAD. It's located at Australia Parkway and Van Buren Street. Land use is adjacent to the commercial parcel, our existing commercial development to the north, existing Centerra Residential to the east and the south, and undeveloped land zone agricultural urban to the west. The one point eight two acre parcel, as I said, will be part of the overall commercial development. It is located here. It fronts on Australia Parkway and is approximately three hundred and sixty-four feet south of Van Buren. The South Entrance Drive here will line up with the median cut, and there will be another entrance drive here to the north going back into the future commercial development. The conceptual site plan submitted with the use permit provo, proposes a convenience store, five thousand square foot convenience store, and eight gasoline pumping stations under a canopy. The applicant is proposing a twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week operation. The application meets the requirements for issuance of a use permit and the additional cri, criteria that's required for the convenience use in the automotive service station. The site is also located within the city center gateway district, gateway overlay district, and staff believes that with the recommended stipulations and the subsequent site plan review process, that all requirements of the overda, overlay district as well as city guidelines should be, design guidelines should be met. Staff is recommending approval subject to the stipulations.
Are you done, Karen?
I am.
I'm sorry, stay on there. Questions of staff? Question?
Mr. Chairman, what's the status of the QuickTrip application to the north? Did that get approved by council?
It's, it's gone through, yes, the use permit was approved. It's gone through site plan approval and has been approved. Not, but not yet been approved by staff. It's in that process now. The use permit was approved by city council. Then it goes through the site plan approval process that it's in now.
Other, other questions of staff, Sean? Okay, Karen, I have a question.
Okay.
Could you, there's a Centerra master plan development that shows this parcel with a hotel. Could you refresh the commission and the chairman's memory on this one? Because I sure don't remember when we did this.
Oh, oh, I, I'm sorry. This is currently in process right now, a PAD amendment. Back, back when Centerra was originally approved for both the residential development to the east and to the south, this corner was designated as a commercial property. The applicants, the new, the new owners of this commercial corner have come in and submitted a PAD amendment that in addition to your standard commercial uses would also include a multifamily component here. That PAD amendment with this conceptual site plan is currently going through staff process. It's back in the applicant's hand, hands to address our comments right now. That PAD amendment will eventually come back before you. But this use permit for the convenience store and gas station is allowed under the current commercial designation under the current PAD. So you haven't forgotten anything. You haven't seen it yet.
Oh, okay. Well, I was, thought I, would, the original Centerra was in the early nineties. Is that correct? When, when I?
Late nineties?
Late nineties.
Late nineties.
Okay. Before my time in Goodyear.
Okay.
Would it be more appropriate for the PAD amendment and the use permit for the gas station to show, come at the same meeting? I mean, this, usually we see the whole conceptual thing and the gas station shows up and the use permit shows up, et cetera, versus here we're seeing a single solitary use that may get rights before the whole parcel is even approved.
Well, but the whole parcel is, that whole thirty-two acres on the corner is approved for commercial development pursuant to the original Centerra PAD. The amendment only brings in the multifamily component. All the other commercial uses are, are allowed under the current PAD.
They would come in under an administrative review, not coming before the commission. Is that correct?
The PAD amendment?
No. If, if, if the multifamily housing was not in this parcel, if there, if there was not a change to it, if it was all commercial, it would just go through staff reviews and, and the only reason this is showing up is because it needs a special use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and there are other uses that may need a use permit as well that would come back.
But normally, if, other than the, the fact that we're changing from commercial to multifamily creates the PAD, therefore, we have the whole site plan in concept.
Right. And, and like you said, it's, yeah, it is strange that this is the first thing to come in, but that will be incumbent upon the applicant then to make sure the remainder of their development fits with this and works with this. And the city, of course, is going to make sure that that happens as well in terms of integration of the various components within the overall development. So.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Peters?
Is it the same landowner for all that property?
For the thirty-two acres, yes.
Thank you. Okay, applicant? Ms. Keith, other than is, does Mr. Jones have a new company?
Pinch hitting for Mr. Jones tonight.
Who is D and G United Capital LLC?
That is our client, and they are the developer of this property, the owner, the current property owner.
Okay.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Karen Keith here on behalf of D and G United Capital this evening. We really don't have anything further to add other than the description that Karen provided. She did a good job providing an overview of, of the development and answering your questions that you've already brought up. At this point, you'll recall that we were here before you a couple months ago, opposing another gas station for a variety of reasons. And that, to be very honest, was largely in part, largely in part, largely due to my and Dustin's personal involvement in the creation of the overlay district. Since then, we've heard a very resounding level of support from the planning commission and the city council that gas stations are not only appropriate but needed in this corridor, and therefore, our applicant decided to modify their plan, which originally had a gas station facing Van Buren Street, moved it over to Australia Parkway, and hence the reason you have this application before you this evening. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions. Just to waste any time.
Questions, 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 questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, Karen, have a seat up close in case somebody needs to ask something. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this case?
I just have a question.
Come up, identify yourself to the commission and ask your question, please. Name and address first.
Nancy Berizzo, one one four one three South Cool Water in Australia. I'm all for this gas station. Thank you, God. I just want to know if there's going to be a traffic signal, since it's going to be facing Australia Parkway. There's no traffic signal there, and with the residents there, we just need a traffic signal now because that gas station is going to be crowded. Trust me.
Karen, do you want to talk about curb cuts and gas and signalization?
There, there will be eventually a traffic signal down here at Centerra Drive at this full median cut down here. There will not be a signal here right in front of the gas station, but there is a full median cut there to allow both north and south movements.
And when you say a full median cut, there will be left-hand turn lane on, on the southbound?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then there's also, you know, in order to, to get from this station, once the, the remainder of the center is built, this is a, a major road running through it here that would allow people to come out and go east this way. So there's other points of access out onto the roadways besides directly out onto Australia.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and request a motion for the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number one zero three zero 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 one.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second. The chair will second it, since the chair is allowed to second it. I have a motion and a second. All those in?
Will you comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Comments from the commission? Comments? Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, you know, I'm sorry, I don't think that this commission gave a resounding approval to gas stations in this area. I think we made it very clear that gas stations closer to I-ten would be acceptable, and we were very concerned with development along Australia Parkway south of Van Buren Street.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Comments, comments, comments?
I suppose I'll make mine now.
Make your comment now.
I, I think I was the lone dissenter, you know, a couple of months ago on, on the, the prior gas station. And my comments will remain the same. It's, uh, I'm not sure, and I'm not convinced, that the gas station in this immediate area, while I appreciate the concerns of the residents where gas stations may be needed, I would much prefer this on Van Buren as opposed to on Australia Parkway. And it seems like the, the approval a couple of months ago, the QuickTrip or the QT or whatever, has now seemed to open the floodgates to, you know, multiple gas stations. And I just wonder how many, you know, next month are we going to see another on the other side of the street? And, you know, continuing to dot the landscape when, you know, I'm not sure that that was the intent, you know, moving forward on this corridor. So, you know, with respect to the applicant and Karen, you know, I, I, I can't support this, this proposal tonight.
Okay. I have a technical question for staff. If we do not have four affirmative votes, then the motion fails. Is that correct? And it would still move up to council?
As I did, Mr. Chairman, if you, if there's a motion to approve, and if it is not successful, then it's automatically deemed as a recommendation for denial.
Okay.
Unless the commission immediately after that failed motion selects to take another motion, such as continuing or take some other action.
Okay. Comments bef, I have a motion and a second, and before I ask for a vote, comments? Anybody? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Okay, I believe the motion fails on a three to two vote.
That's correct, because you need four votes in order to pass on a motion.
Okay.
By, by your rules of procedure.
Okay, does anybody, any additional motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, can I continue it till next month? I move to continue it till the April meeting. I don't know the date.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a motion to continue this. I have a second. All, all, to the twenty-first? All those in favor, I'm sorry. Question. Yes, we can have a discussion.
What would we hope to accomplish by continuing?
Mr. Chairman, I think that there's another commission member that may want to weigh in on this, this issue and give her the opportunity.
That's very valid. I don't know, probably.
I, I think that's a valid point. We, we are missing one commission member. And so hopefully we'll have six commission members at the time. I don't think we'll have seven. But all those, any other discussion on a continuance? All those in favor of a continuance to the next P and Z meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. And staff communications? Census, right?
No.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention to you that we're hosting a public information meeting tomorrow with the development community on proposed changes to our fee schedule.
Nine o'clock, right?
Be at nine o'clock.
No breakfast is served.
None to speak of. We, we may have something, but I wouldn't count on it.
Okay.
So it's, it's an opportunity to explain the fee schedule, changes to the development community, and entertain comments, questions, and remarks. So we just wanted to advise you that. And I think Bob has another item he wanted to report on.
Mr. Chairman, actually, two items relative to the vacant commissioner's seat, maybe just to update you. Just got the, got this from Joe, is that we've obviously advertised, I guess you would call it that, and put out notice relative to seeking applicants for the planning commission seat. That closes on the twenty-ninth, and then on the thirty-first convenes a selection panel. And I believe we're open to ask one of the planning commission members to be involved in that.
There is, there is on that in one of our past, past.
And the goal is to have council make an appointment in early April in time to be on the April, to be here on the April's planning commission meeting.
Excellent.
And then I guess the other item is a personal note. I just want to let the commission know that this will be my last time before you. My last day at the city will be Friday next week, week from Friday. Combinations of things, the city's current situation relative to budget, also the structure of the department, and also, I guess, my desire maybe to go back into retirement or semi-retirement. All combined means now's the time for me to move on. or semi-retirement, all combined means now's the time for me to move on. So I want to say I appreciate all my time with the commission, you do a great job. I've worked with a lot of planning commissioners through my days, and, and you're one of the best and stuff. And I appreciate your time and dedication to doing this, and really do, you're doing a great job. So thanks.
All right, we're going to be sorry to see you go, Bob. We, we truly admire your advice. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
You've been elevated.
Future, future planning manager, Mr. Schmitz.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to express our appreciation to Bob for his service to the, to the department. I'm sure if Harvey had been here tonight, he's off ill, so he would want to recognize Bob for the work that he's done, express how much we appreciate it. Bob took over the helm during a very busy time and guided the city in the planning effort for the annexation in the Sonoran Valley, and has worked on many, many other projects that have come to fruition over the last few years. And we're going to miss him, so, and I know I expressed that not only on Harvey's part, but also all of the staff, and we wish Bob well, and we'll miss him. Thank you.
And I move, I accept the motion to adjourn, and we're sorry to see current planning manager, Mr. Coons, depart us, but I hope you'll come back and visit us as a concerned citizen every once in a while to give us.